Two out of three are here, so. Okay, let's, this is the Small Cities Committee meeting on Monday, June 20th, 2022 at 6:15 PM. We have two members here, Keri Hona and Drake Waldron. Okay, so, Wilson, Dave Oliver, is that? Yeah. Okay, anyway. Item number one, public comment. No, nobody's in person, so we're going to just go right to number two. Small cities exception. Vote to approve a funding increase for the installation of a ramp and relocation of the washer and dryer as described in the letter dated May 27, 2022, pending city council approval. Okay.
So I'll make a motion for the purpose of discussion at least.
Motion. Councilwoman Hona and second by Councilman Waldron, discussion.
I'm just curious, but it does kind of seem like quite a bit more than is normally allowed.
Right.
Do you have any experience with the Department of Housing, approve something like this if we approve it?
Yeah, well, the thing is, one thing. Yeah, what was it, the?
Looked like she only could, in theory, use $2,262.
Right.
Unless.
Unless we give the approval, right? In this case, the, the, the purpose of the, the whole small cities is to help people, and that's what we wanted to do. So even if we rejected it, they might come back and may say, we have to do this for this person. So that's why.
Seems like a.
And it's, how much money is it?
It's twelve, fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Construction costs being what they are, nothing seems.
No, that's.
But it does seem like a lot for a ramp, washer and dryer.
Yeah.
But. Things are crazy right now, so, but they haven't done the bidding process yet.
Right. So, an accurate cost, so, yeah, because we have a disabled the individual here with extenuating circumstance.
Okay.
So. So. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nobody. Okay, so it's approved. Number three, any other business?
No.
Not that I know of. Okay, and, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And we are adjourned.
Sixteen.
Two, three minutes.
I'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the city council and WPCA to order. For the record, today is Monday, June 20th, 2022. And participating this evening in person, I have Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Manija, and participating via Zoom is Councilman Oliver, and that does constitute a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
To the flag of United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, and one with liberty and justice.
Thank you all. Item one on the agenda is an open invitation from the public. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So.
Thank you, we're here, Councilwoman Hona and Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to address the board this evening?
Again, I just want to come up here before Kevin gets up here.
Yeah.
Steve Iveyne, resident Torrington. I want to thank the mayor for holding Juneteenth Day yesterday. It was a great event. We had a great day. A lot of people came out. We, we had a great speech from Darlene Battle and tell her story of the civil rights movement. So it was a, just a very nice moment, so thank you. I just want to bring up the Bog Road Bridge. If you could refresh my memory, we, we had a referendum on this a few years ago. And just want to understand how the finances are split between us and Harwhitan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iveyne. So Ray, at the end of the evening, during department head comments, we'll have him. Oh, Paul will, Paul will update on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Up into the floor still. Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Hayes here. Just a couple of these, a quick comments. The one is you can't keep cutting capital improvements from the police and fire department because then the buildings become deteriorate. And then you're going to say, we need new public service complex. Police and fire, public safety complex. We need $75 million. Why? Because we didn't do maintenance on the buildings right along. In the past, that's what happened to the schools. Now we're building a big school complex. You can't do that. That's, then the buildings fail. And even with the air conditioning, roof repairs, your basics, that's, that's bad. The other question I do have is since the, the, the employees didn't receive a thousand dollars, that's $432,000. Do we have any plans to what that money will be used for?
I'm not sure that I understand your question. Nobody is.
From the COVID relief fund. The, there was earmarked for a thousand dollars for all the employees.
No. No, that was a request that did not get fulfilled. And I'm sorry to the, to the council for answering the questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, but I was just curious what's happening to that money? Because it was, if you had $10 million and you broke it down, and that was requests, so that was part of the funding, well, if that didn't happen, what's happening to it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have ARBA questions on the agenda. We'll get that answer, stick around.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We're still open to the public for additional questions or comments from the public. Right, saying and hearing none, let's move into item number two. I'll entertain a motion. I'm going to take this A, B, C, D, E. Two A, I'll adjutant motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act on June 6, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman Manija.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
All right, so I have two abstentions. That would be Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Hona. Item two B, I'll adjutant motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes for the suruse fee from June 6, 2022. Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
And second, Councilman Waldron. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
And for the record, same abstentions, Councilman Waldron and Hona. Item two C, I'll adjutant motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes for the peddling and soliciting regarding food trucks from June 6, 2022. Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilman Manija. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And two abstentions. Item D, I'll adjutant motion to consider the public hearing meeting minutes for Chapter 194 vehicles and traffic Article 7 motor vehicle registration of June 6, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstentions. Item two E, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June 6, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija. Second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And the abstentions to Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Hona. Moving on to item three. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2022 management resolution updates as described in the personnel director's memo dated June 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions? We have our personal director on the call to answer.
Good evening, everyone.
Aye.
I have just one thing, mayor, I'd like to say, and looking at my memorandum dated June 10th, 2020, I made one typo in the first paragraph. And that is that the updates to management res were made last July, and they're effective through June 30 of 2021, not 2022. Otherwise, memo stands.
Thank you. All right, any questions? And just for new council members, the management resolution really mirrors the UPSU, which is the supervisors' contracts. So that's why you always see these happen after UPSU, and hence the reason for the delay. As as Attorney La Meris pointed out about the effective date on the prior contract.
Good question. Does it just apply to the four? Four, is it just like four positions that are the plastic?
No, there are exempt employees, there are hourly employees. It's Police Department Chief and Deputy Chief.
So it's exempt employees?
Yes, yeah. You're welcome. Any other questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation to Small Cities Committee to approve a funding increase for the installation of a ramp and relocation of the washer and dryer as described in letter dated May 27, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and second by Councilwoman Hona. And any other information from the small?
Uh, yeah, we, the Small Cities Committee met before, and, and this is a special situation. This person, this taxpayer holds a loan, previous loan, and there's a, a problem with getting more money, but this is an extenuating circumstance. It's a wheelchair situation and access. So they've requested that we just up the limit to help this person out. So they have plenty of equity in the House to cover it. So it's not in danger of losing the money. So I would recommend that we vote for it.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to enter a bid contract with West State Mechanical, Inc. of Torrington for on-call general plumbing services and repairs. The contract will be in effect from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, at the rates specified in memo dated June 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion or the contract? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to enter a bid contract with Temp Mechanical Services, Inc. of Sullington for on-call maintenance and repair of the HVAC system, equipment for the city. This contract will be in effect from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, at the rate specified in memo dated June 13th.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second.
So moved.
Are there questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. I'll entertain a motion to renew the contract with Still River Gardens LLC of Litchfield for the design, planting, and maintenance of the downtown garden beds, planters, and trees dated May 11, 2021, based on the terms and conditions as set forth in said contract.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Manija. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the contract or the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving into all the THSTMS work that the Building Committee has been undertaking. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to approve Tri-State Material Testing Lab LLC of Berlin to be the consultant for Torrington's material testing and special inspection services for the middle high school central administration construction project, pending Building Committee and Board of Education approval. That is scheduled to says June 16th. That did occur, right? You did, thank you. All right, so, so the motion would read not pending building, but based on Building Committee and Board of Education approval. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve ONG's trade recommendation for the enabling phase one, as presented pending, is, as presented, this has been approved by the Building Committee and Board of Education on June 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilman Manija. Questions?
I do have a question. Did they settle on a, you were debating the two lowest bidders on 16th?
Yeah, we settled on CJ Fuji. A little bidder, $2,999,000. We had, just like, if it's okay, mayor.
Yeah, please.
Eight bidders, which was unbelievable. And the two lowest, ONG went through both. We had a meeting, two hours at each, at least two hours at each contractor, and they met all the requirements. So also, if I can, is, is, do you want to use this? No.
Does everybody have the?
Yeah, is it okay? Could you approve the, the motion because this is the state?
Does it require resolution? Is it?
Just what do we want for start?
No, that's fine. Right. I think probably the cleaner way to do this would be to ask Councilman Waldron and Manija to withdraw their motion.
Yes.
All right. So the new motion, and I don't know, do you want to read that motion into the record?
What's that?
Do you want to read the motion into the record?
Okay, so this is going to take place together?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm reading it. Okay. So I'd like to move, a motion to approve the recommendation by ONG Industries to award the Torrington Middle School, High School, COA PH1 site work contract to CJ Fuji in the amount of $2,990,000 and to reject alternate number one for deletion of parking at the temporary north parking area and to reject alternate number two for the addition of a temporary parking area off Major Bestie Drive adjacent to the basketball court.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. All right, now, questions? Any other questions for Mr. Arum? None? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We saved over $200,000, so.
That's amazing.
We hope the next one will be the better, so thank you, mayor and everybody.
Sure. All right, item 10. Having previously approved, having been previously approved by the Building Committee, Torrington Board of Education, I'll entertain a motion to approve the services of M. Horton Associates of Branford as a consultant for Torrington structural threshold review of the middle school, high school, central administrative construction project. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manija. Are there questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a one-year extension of the contract agreement with Premier Landscaping LLC of Thomaston, Connecticut, in the amount of $70,000 for the local flood protection project routine maintenance. This project is funded through the landfill post-closure activities in Nogatuck River Levy Accounts, as further explained in City Engineer Paul Cousins' memo dated June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders to the PAC Group LLC of Torrington for $1,358,404.20 and allow for the expenditures of up to $135,840 for the 24th East reconstruction of various roads, project 2022.2. This project is funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund, as further explained in City Engineer Paul Cousins' memo dated June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on the motion or contract? Or I should say bid? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf, on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders to the PAC Group LLC of Torrington for $759,750.63 and allow for expenditures of up to $75,975 for the milling and overlay of various road projects 2022.3. This project is funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund, as further explained in Paul Cousins' memo dated June 20th, 2022. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manija. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Item 14. I'll entertain a motion to consider, to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders to Seal Coating, Inc., DBA Indus of Braintree, Mass. For $860,728.00 and allow for expenditures of up to $86,007 for the cold-in-place recycling various roads, Phase 2022.5.1. Again, this project is funded through the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund, as further described in Paul Cousins' memo dated June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders to PAC Group LLC of Torrington for $535,427.80 and allow for expenditures of up to $53,504 paving various roads, Phase 2022.5.2. Project is being funded through the Pavement Management Program Bond Funds and further explained in Paul Cousins' memo.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders to ONG Industries, Inc. of Torrington for $2377,735 and allow for expenditures of up to $237,735 for rehabilitation of Bog Road over the Nogatuck River. This project is funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund at 86% and the town of Harlington, 14%, as further explained in Paul Cousins' memo dated June 20th, 2022.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Manija.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. And I know, Paul, Mr. Iveyne had a question about Harlington's contribution. Do you want to just talk a little bit about this project?
So that was, that was in the memo, in the request. So the, the split is based on a three-year average of tax revenues, and it's, it's listed in the memo as 85% Torrington share and 15% Harlington share is the funding for the, the funding split for the project. I believe that was what the.
Eighty-six, fourteen, I see, is that?
Yeah. Eighty-six, fourteen, yeah.
Questions?
Do you have a follow-up? Is it just because they have less tax revenue, they have to pay less for the road? Isn't the split like right in the middle?
It's split in the middle, but that was the, that was the agreement that was made when how they decided to share the, the project.
I'm sorry, Councilman Manija.
Who decided?
Uh, that was set by the previous city engineer. That was an agreement made prior to my being city engineer.
And prior counsel?
Pardon me?
And prior counsel, as we were going through the proposal to.
It's been in the pavement management sheets all along, since, since the project had been originally put to award. I believe that was back in 2018 or 17, when the project went to, went to bid, and then there was, there was a funding issue, so it got canceled. And that's why we went out and redesigned it.
Well.
That's been the agreement that Torrington has agreed, or that Harlington has agreed with. And I just confirmed that by email before we went to, before we went to bid.
I know you're just the messenger.
Yeah.
Respectfully, I agree with that deal too. Does anybody that was here then remember how I came up with that? I mean, it just seems like it's. I, I'm like having a little bit of post-traumatic stress from the animal control facility that's a community facility and doesn't have much community in it except for us. So I just feel like we're carrying the water. I just don't have any other insight on that.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall. When you talk about the tax revenue, was it because the properties that this bridge serves are, the vast majority of them are Torrington assets? It's the animal control facilities, the WPCA, you have ONG over there, we have.
Like I said, that was, that was done by February. Through the city engineer, obviously, the agreement that was made. And we just, I've carried that through as, as the agreement. That's from what I understand, that town of Harlington has agreed with.
Well, I don't know how to do it, but I would love to be able to table it for two weeks and try to get answers to those questions.
Thank you.
I, it was before my tenure as well as the Works Director, so I figure all here, kind of in the same boat a little bit. So we can go through the records and the files and see what transactions took place in regards to that, establishing that ratio. The main users of the, that particular bridge, which is a high-use bridge with heavy truck traffic, is the water pollution control facility and that acreage down there, Supreme Industries and ONG. But if the recommendation is to table it, we will go through the files and look for the, the documents and transactions that established that agreement.
All the truck traffic that serves ONG and Supreme has to go into Torrington because they can't go up Bog Road. So that all that traffic does go across into Torrington.
They can't because the bridges can't hold them right now?
No, no, I was just saying, the truck traffic can't go up Bog Road into Harlington because it's too steep, so all the traffic goes.
So I'm sorry, I heard a motion to table.
I don't know if I can do it and have a question on that.
Well, we have to.
We have to withdraw our motion.
Correct.
We can do it. I know, really. It's better than what I get when they're not, not muting themselves. So either way, we can entertain that motion to table with a second. Conversation's over, we table this and bring it back in two weeks. I heard a motion to table from Councilwoman Hona. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good.
And we will forward our findings to the council, the mayor and the city council.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, you know, I think, Ray, the, I think the record we want to pull is all of the conversation when we went out to to get board, the council and the board of. to get board, the council and the Board of Finance to agree to go out to bid. I think that's when all that conversation took place.
Yeah, I mean, it was prior to when we first originally had bid it to establish the cost share in relation to it. Like Mr. Cousins indicated, not sure if that was seventeen or eighteen. Probably was likely seventeen because we included it in the referendum, eighteen referendum. So it was probably likely seventeen, we went out to bid. Then just didn't have the funding for what those bids came in at or they were proposed. So prior to that, those discussions and establishments would have taken place. So those are the documents. We'll look at the Board of Finance as well as the city council as well as the engineering's internal documents. And any, obviously, communications with Harlington.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that's extra work.
No, yeah, it's a valid question, so obviously, so.
So timing-wise, I'm just thinking if this was for the award, the bid, maybe would the council entertain a special meeting so that we could do this and get this off our so maybe later in this week or early next year? Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised program description for the City of Torrington's facade and building improvement program and authorize the release of up to $250,000 for round two of this program as specified in Rista Malanco's memo dated June 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. Questions? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Northwest Connecticut Community Foundation for the administration and technical assistance of the Community Impact Grant Program as specified in Rista Malanco's memo dated June 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minichia. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All right, questions?
This might just be an opportunity to Mr. Hayes left. This is kind of where the money went, right?
So this is some of, this is some of the money and what it was going to elaborate on is that spending plan had been approved by the council a few months ago, back in April, actually. And we've been sticking to that spending plan, so and that spending plan is posted on the city's website.
And my understanding, and I'm someone that's very supportive of premium pay for essential workers, but it didn't get a lot of votes in the grand scheme of things about where to spend our ARPA money. And so that's how we kind of came to the decision to not.
Yes, yeah, through the survey questions that did not get a lot of support. Other questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, I'll entertain a motion to review the request of the Northwest Connecticut Transit District and authorize $50,000 from the city's ARPA funds to be paid to the Northwest Connecticut Transit District.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Are there questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Which which pile of ARPA money is this coming out of? Is this
So yeah, when, when we originally talked about the Northwest Transit District in the very beginning, we had it as an appropriation that was earmarked specifically for Northwest Transit District, the Transit District, which is extremely critical to public transportation needs here in the City of Torrington. Obviously, going through some very difficult times with a pandemic. Ridership was down. Reimbursements from DOT for ridership was not happening. And they had sought funding from all of the member municipalities. That's 21 member municipalities. As we were running out of money, trying to figure out how we were going to try to get as much of this out to the public for the grants, we decided that we would roll the Northwest Transit District into that grant and ask them to apply for it through that grant. I am now asking, instead of rolling it into that grant, the funds are critically needed now. And this would be coming out of the contingency portion of the ARPA funding. And we had set aside a little over 5% in contingency, Rista. So that is where it will be coming. If approved, I should say. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item twenty, I'll entertain a motion acting by the city council to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and MSW Recycling Coordinator pursuant to City Ordinance Chapter 128 to set the fee for extra automated refuse containers at $250 for a period beginning July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. Questions?
What is the current fee?
Current, yes.
The current fee, and best as I can determine, established in 2004 is $125.
And there's any size?
What's that?
Any size.
Any size container. Our typical distribution is a 96-gallon container.
A big jump, but it's been nearly 20 years.
It's been nearly 20 years based upon fiscal year, closing out fiscal year 2021 with regards to collection and disposal of solid waste. The cost per carton is $246.68.
And I think the only thing I would add to that is if I have two 96-gallon containers in my front yard and I'm filling them both, the amount of solid waste that I'm putting into that system is also costing the taxpayers additional funds.
Yeah, the average pounds per household for a year per container is 1,783 pounds.
All right. You know, questions?
Councilwoman Minichia. Did you happen to maybe think about maybe doing a tiered, depending on the size, they get, so a tiered fee? So as to make the large container
Yeah.
much more costly?
Um. We did talk about that. We talked about it, you know, how we, you know, to structure that. Typically, almost 99% of our containers are 96-gallon. And when people request containers, they want the 96-gallon. I don't know why. I mean, that's, to me, is a huge container. But we did, we did talk about that. And if we move forward, as you're aware, that chapter is in front of the ordinance committee with developing more discussions in regards to the revision of that ordinance. There was the discussion that we are standard to 64 or 48. So we did discuss that. And if we do, I can come back with, you know, we worked through the ordinance committee establishing a tiered fee structure. But what's currently in the ordinance now, it just says any extra cart is fee established by the city council. So it doesn't differentiate on the size.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ray. Item 21, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in Corporation Council's memo of June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item 22, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector, authorize the tax refunds indicated on our list dated June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 23, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on a list dated June 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item 24, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open. Anything else this evening? All right. From Public Works, Ray? All right. To my Corporation Council. Anything this evening, Vic?
No, thank you, Mayor.
And I see Deputy Chief Tripp is on the call. Anything this evening from the Fire Department?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. I did get a couple of Torrington alerts today, so it's working. Good. Anything from the City Clerk's office? All right, moving on to item 25. Oh, Rista, Rista, I'm sorry. Anything from Economic Development this evening? Yeah, she went up to my office to get that.
I did have a quick update. So CEDIS is the Connecticut Economic Development Association. And they give accreditations to municipalities that follow best practices in their land use departments and in their municipalities to be business-friendly communities. And over the winter, we submitted an application explaining all of our, what we do, do working with businesses, what our practice is when people apply for new businesses to come in town or expansion. And we were accredited with a Silver certification through our Silver Community for Best Land Use and Economic Development Practices.
And Rista was able to attend that CEDIS meeting to collect that recognition.
So we'll hang the plaque on our wall here at City Hall.
All right, now moving to 25. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members. Councilwoman Hona?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to the screen first. Anything this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Waldron?
No, not just one question. Next meeting is what, July 5th? Because July 4th is on a Monday, right?
Yes.
And what day is the fireworks?
Fireworks are the 8th. Yes.
Is that a rain date tonight?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
That's it. Councilwoman Hona.
I did have the chance to attend a pride event with you, Mayor, and so many members of the community, and it was lovely. And I heard that the Juneteenth event was great. I was in charge of Father's Day dinner, so I was not able to attend, but that, those are both great and great examples that we're an inclusive and welcoming community, so those were really wonderful to see. And my perennial question until the pool opens is what's happening with the pool? Do we have a schedule for it to open? Are we fully staffed? Where are we?
So at last report, we have 13 lifeguards. We have an aquatics director and a prior aquatics director who is going to be somewhat on call. These are all brand-new lifeguards. The city is doing training and certification. The vast majority of them are high school-aged students. So there'll be a lot of real hands-on, eyes-on, just to see how everybody's doing, making sure that we're you know, what's, what we're putting out there for the safety of our swimmers, young and old, that we're in good hands. As you see, the state of Connecticut, I think even nationally, is still struggling with lifeguards. Still going through a very difficult time. State of Connecticut was offering and because they just weren't getting any applicants, they recently increased it to $22 an hour. So what we've done, because we're investing in the training and the certification, starting the lifeguards, I want to say at 15, 50 an hour, but offering a stipend that if they stay the full eight weeks with the city, there will be a lump sum stipend paid to them at the end. That way, we're not training them, certifying them, and saying goodbye to them to work at the state. That's the amount of coverage. What we know is we can cover Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Mondays. That is an absolute given. Those days, it will be open. Splash pad has slightly less demand on a well-trained, certified lifeguard. We could probably open that splash pad outside of those regular hours. We continue to interview. We continue to attempt to hire with the hope that we can add a day every couple of weeks.
If I recall, you said 17 lifeguards would have been fully staffed? Or was that minimum?
I think that's minimum. That's minimum. Yes.
And are from Friday to Monday or are the hours, they used to be at 1 o'clock to
So, you know, and unfortunately, I, I had hoped that Brett Simmons was going to be able to join us today to have this conversation with you. I was anticipating the question. But he unfortunately had an accident and is unable to participate. I believe the hours, there will still be adult swim, even on those other days. Adult swim will happen in the morning. There will still be a competitive, like lap swim that's available. I can have him hopefully prepare a memo for you and update you with all of the hours and here we are. The, oh, he didn't give me the hours on this one. I can have him do a memo and update you with those hours, but
I'm assuming that staffing means that there won't be less.
Yes, yeah. And it's rebuilding, and that's one of the conversations that he and I had last Wednesday. I said, you know, we need to rebuild. The question about the stipend and how much was an incentive enough to keep a kid here? You know, 15 years old, 16 years old, 17 years old. And I, I feel strongly with gasoline prices the way they are. You know, it's a nicer opportunity for somebody who lives in town just to commute to the pool or walk to the pool and work, you know, instead of spending all the money they make at the pool for gasoline to get to their next job.
Yeah, to drive to a skate park somewhere.
Yes, yeah. So rebuilding is, you know, is our model this year. And we're hoping also that this experience with this group of kids, that they'll recruit their friends or, or other swim teammates and we'll get more next year. Sure. Right, Councilman Minichia?
Nothing, Mayor, thanks.
All right, if there are no other questions from the council, I'll open the meeting up to public comment. For agenda items only, do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Open to the public for agenda items. Hearing none, I'm yeah, I'm just going to add one more. So I should have done this when we were mayor and members. The, I sent to the council members very late this afternoon a draft of the memorandum of understanding for the city council, City of Torrington and the Board of Education Building Committee with regard to Major Best Drive. And what we're finally giving a name to is the Elise Bass Park Parking Lot. Obviously, for school construction purposes, this parking lot is critical for the construction phase with a construction lay-down lot and post-construction for school parking. So you'll see in the, late this afternoon was probably right before I came downstairs, downstairs, there's a draft of it. It's nothing more than a draft right now. Um, there's a draft of it. It's nothing more than a draft right now. I also sent it to Mr. Arum and Mr. Longabuco. Uh, it is being presented to the building committee for discussion and then Board of Education for approval. All right, so. No? Uh, your Torrington CT?
Yeah.
All right. So. So we, um, no decisions have to be made. I just want to give you an opportunity. I expect that with the building committee or Board of Education, if there are any questions that come back to you. Any conversations that happen offline, I just wanted to make sure that you had it also. Um, and once recommendations, uh, come back from the building committee, we can, um, put it before the council for approval. There being no other business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.